For those who I don't know, my name is Rabbi Michael Namath. I work at the Religious Action Center of Reform Judaism, which is part of the Union for Reform Judaism. The Union for Reform Judaism is the organization to which Reform congregations belong. And the Religious Action Center is our social justice office with locations in Washington DC as well as throughout the country. And I have, for those that don't know, I'm married to Rabbi Shankman. And so when we arrived here in the Washington DC area in 2001, that's when I started my work at the Religious Action Center. And she started at Washington Hebrew Congregation. And it has been a wonderful experience for both of us. So today, I'm thrilled to have all of you here with, together for this study session. The title of it is Repentance, Reparation, and Restoration. So before we even begin, a couple of things just to note. The first is that as a typical rabbi, I probably have way too many texts. So some texts will get to delve into a little bit more than others and others will, we may not even necessarily get to read because I have a feeling I have way too much. The other, which is always a challenge on Zoom is I'd love for it to be as participatory as possible and to hear your voice and your thoughts and your comments on the text as well. And I know that it's sometimes hard on Zoom to unmute yourself to, if you want, you can also, we can try to use, there's not so many of us, but if you feel comfortable sort of getting in line under the reactions button, there's the raise hand feature, so we know that you're ready with something in mind. And if your video is off and you raise your hand, we should be able to see that too. We'll try to use the chat a little bit. It sometimes is hard because I will be, in a moment, I'll put the text, a link to the text that we'll be using in the chat. So if you want to look there, you can look there, but we'll also share the screen. So you don't have to worry about clicking on any links. So my first question for all of you, we have repentance, reparation, and restoration. Which one of those things is drawing you here to this session today? And you can choose to go off mute, you could put it in the chat, you could do however you want. What is it that's drawing you in today? Is it the repentance, the reparation, the restoration? Or it should be redemption, but restoration, well, we're gonna call restoration more redemption. So don't be shy, I would love to hear from one or two, or maybe in the chat even. Redemption, reparation. Redemption, repentance. Tie to current events, excellent. Excellent. Thank you for those who have commented. So we're gonna get started with the texts. And for those that want to have their own, their own ability to move amongst the texts, I'm gonna give that to you. And I'm gonna move that screen over so that I can see all of you and see the texts at the same time. So the first text that we have is around repentance. And this comes from the Mishnah Torah, which is from Maimonides. And it's a commentator and a text that we, our commentator that we often look to. And in the text, this very first text, it says, "Notwithstanding that, the blowing of the ram's horn trumpet on Rosh Hashanah is a scriptural statute. Its blast is symbolic, as if saying, 'You people that sleep, bestir yourself from your sleep; and you people who are slumbering, emerge from your slumber; examine your conduct, turn in repentance, and remember your Creator; they that forget the truth because of the vanities of times.'" Now, some of these pieces may actually sound familiar because they, the stir yourself from your sleep, those who slumber, we find that in our liturgy, actually. And so when this is talking about turning in repentance, who is this in repentance toward? That's our first question, is who are we repenting to? You can feel free to use the chat, you can free, oh, screen sharing pause, let me reshare. There we go. Hopefully that is fixed. And let me, so who is, who is this repentance toward is the question that I have for you. Right, it is repentance to God. Because it's for the sins, for the things that we've done, that we weren't supposed to do, that in our relationship to God. And that is, that is so much of our liturgy on Yom Kippur, is about that repentance. The, you know, anyone think of any of the prayers that we said, even, maybe not the official titles, but some of the themes that were in the prayers and want to share those? I know it's hard to come off mute, but you can do that, or in the chat, that's also good too. But we, we think of the Alchet, for the sin we committed against you, that whole litany of prayers. We think of the Ashamnu, which has the alphabet of, of sins that we've committed. And it's all about thinking about how we have committed sins, avinu malkanu, excellent. Those are all things that we are thinking of in our relationship with God. And so then there's another text, when we go down to the Mishnah Torah on repentance. Jeffrey, thank you, that's exactly where we're gonna be heading next, right? Because in so many, Jeffrey wrote in the chat, for those that don't have it open, what about the people I have wronged? So repentance, actually, there's sort of two categories in a lot of ways. There's the sins against God, and there's the sins or the ways we have wronged other people. And Yom Kippur is actually about both. It's about both, because there are some things that only God can forgive us for. But then there are the other things where we have harmed another individual, where we have to go to that individual. And we have to seek repentance from them. So in this next text, all commandments of the Torah, whether they be mandatory or prohibitive. If a person violates any of them, either presumptuously or erroneously, when they will repent themselves and turn away from their sinful way, they are obliged to confess before God, even as it is said, "When a man or woman shall commit any sin, then they shall confess their sin which they have done." Which is a confession of words. Such confession is a mandatory commandment. How is the verbal confession made? The sinner says, "I beseech thee, O great name, I have sinned, I have been obstinate, I have committed profanity against thee, particularly in doing thus and such. Now behold, I have repented and am ashamed of my actions forever; I will not relapse into this thing again." And another piece from Mishnah Torah, what is complete repentance? He who once, he who once more had it in his power to repeat a violation, but separated himself therefrom and did not do it because of repentance, not out of fear or lack of strength. So complete repentance comes when you not only have asked for that forgiveness, but also when the opportunity comes again to do that same wrong, the individual doesn't do the same wrong. And doesn't do so because they're afraid of getting in trouble, or because they didn't have the ability to do it, but because they know that it's wrong. That's what true repentance looks like. And so then, looking at our next Mishnah Torah, as you can see, Maimonides had a lot to say about Rosh Hashanah, Yom Kippur, about Teshiva and repentance, Adakah, I mean, so much, there's a whole lot there. This is where we get into what Jeffrey was commenting on. And so thank you for that foreshadowing. Neither repentance nor the Day of Atonement atone for any save for sins committed between a person and God. For instance, one who ate a forbidden food. But sins between one person and another, for instance, one injures his or her or their neighbor, or curses his or her or their neighbor, or plunders, or offends in like matters, is ever not absolved unless that person makes restitution of what they owe and begs forgiveness. So, and though they make, they make restitution of the monetary debt, they must pass by the harm, and it goes on and on. But I think that there's a real key thing here, that we often talk about asking the other person for forgiveness. But sometimes there's real harm that has been committed. And so we also not only need to ask for forgiveness, but to rectify that harm, to try and fix it as best we can. And we'll get into that in a moment, as we talk about reparation or reparations, and what that looks like. So for our repentance, our Teshiva section, a reminder what we've talked about. There's repentance to God for those things that we've done, that are between us and God. And there's repentance with another, between us and another person. Any questions, comments, before we go into the next section? Okay, we're gonna keep going. So there has started to become conversations, oh, actually, I just saw one, so I'm gonna, Rona, thank you. Great, so one of the questions is about anger I feel towards neighbors who are anti-vaccination, or the governor in Florida against mask mandates, and just the challenges of living in, in that sort of situation that impacts health. And that's a much harder one, right? Because that is not someone that we have a personal relationship with. And one, probably someone also who does not think that they have committed an act against us. And so one of the things for repentance is for us to, for the individual to actually understand that what they're, what they have done is harming other people. And unfortunately, this is a case where I do not think that the other party perhaps sees it that way. And so I don't know that there can be repentance, there could be repentance on their part, but it's not going to, we're not in that place yet, as far as with the governor in Florida, and how they are interacting in the policies that they're passing. Reparations, reparations is something that has started to come up in the news. It started to come up around issues of racial justice. And while for some reparations may seem like a new topic, it's actually something that has happened in the not-so-distant past. The reparations for Japanese Americans who were interred during World War II. Reparations from Germany to Israel have happened. There was, that, we could do a whole session on that and the controversy in Israel around that, around whether they should or should not accept the reparations. It was certainly not a clear-cut decision to accept those reparations. But what are our texts say about reparations? What, what, how is it connected to Teshiva, to repentance? How is it connected to redemption? And so that's what we're gonna explore a little bit here. So in Mishnah Torah, sticking with, you know, good old Maimonides. "Yom Kippur is the time set aside for repentance for all, the individual as well as the many, for it is the goal of exoneration and quiddance in Israel, because thereof all are obligated to make reparation and confession on the Day of Atonement." And so the Day of Atonement, Yom Kippur, is about confession, confessing those things that we've done wrong. And it's about repentance. But repentance, as we saw in the earlier text, is also about making right the wrong that happened. And in many ways, that's the idea of reparations as well, is trying to make right a wrong that has happened in the past. And so our texts go on to say, in Exodus, there is a really interesting piece. When, this is at the beginning of the story of the Exodus. So we're familiar with the Israelites go into Egypt, they're enslaved, they're in slavery for a very long time. Moses receives the call, goes to Pharaoh, and after the Passover story essentially, Pharaoh finally says, "Go." Moses goes to Pharaoh, says, "Let my people go." And through the plagues, through lots and lots of back and forth, the, the Pharaoh finally says, "Go." And as the Israelites are about to leave Egypt, we read in the Book of Exodus, there's two interesting translations here. Traditionally, it actually is the second translation, is what people often use, which is, "Tell the people, the Israelites, the Jewish people, to borrow each man from his neighbor and each woman from hers, objects of silver and gold." So borrow, what does the word borrow intimate? What does it suggest? It suggests that, in fact, it will be returned. However, I think it'd be pretty hard for the Jewish people fleeing Egypt, headed for 40 years in the desert, headed toward the promised land, to return the things that they took, or that they, that were given to them, sorry, that were given to them. And so others have looked at the, the language, the Hebrew, and actually suggested that, like, that is not the correct translation. That actually, a more accurate translation might be, "Speak now in the ears of the people," which is very similar to, meaning the Egyptians, "and let them ask every man of his neighbor and every woman of her neighbor jewels of silver and jewels of gold." Now, regardless of the translation, the question is, why? Why are they asking for the jewels? Why are they asking for silver and gold? So it works out well, partly for the narrative, because later on, they're gonna build the Mishkan, the temple in the wilderness, so they have the things to build it. But that's not the reason. The reason is for payment for slavery. That's what the commentators talk about. The commentators say, they're not borrowing, they're receiving payment for their work. They're essentially receiving reparations for the work of slavery in Egypt. And so in Deuteronomy, there are rules around slaves. Now, slavery in, in the Bible, as it's described, is not a permanent situation, as we'll see here in this text. "If a fellow Hebrew man or woman is sold to you, he shall serve you six years, and in the seventh year, you shall set him free. When you set him free, do not let him go empty-handed. Furnish him out of the flock, the threshing floor, and the vat, with which God has blessed you." So the flock, the animals, the threshing floor, the grain, the vat, meaning the wine, or the, there even was beer, sort of, in ancient days. Bear in mind that you were, and why? The question is, why, if they were a slave, do you give them these things when they go? And the text answers that question by saying, "Bear in mind that you were slaves in the land of Egypt, and your God redeemed you. Therefore, I enjoin this commandment upon you today." So in many ways, this commandment is reflecting what happened during the Exodus. During the Exodus, when the Jewish people were slaves and were coming out of their slavery, they were in fact paid, they were compensated. And so we're gonna look at our next text, about what happens when something is taken and it's been used. What do you do if you're trying to do Teshiva or repentance? You're trying to repent for something, or make a repair, the wrong you have done, by bringing that person back to wholeness, right? So we've talked about how in repentance, it's not only asking for forgiveness, it's making right what you did wrong. So here, the rabbis in the Talmud come up with a, a good question, as they often do in the Talmud. And they, of course, answer it more than one way. So they say, the Mishnah teaches that Rabbi Yochanan Ben Geddega further testified about a stolen beam. So someone steals a beam. And if you watch enough HGTV, you know that the beams are really important. When you gotta put in a beam, because you wanna make it open concept, it's very expensive. So beams are pretty important, right? It is an important structure for a building. So a stolen beam that was already built into a building, and said that the injured party receives the value of the beam, but not the beam itself, right? So that's one opinion. With regard to this, the sages taught, if one robbed another of a beam and built it into a building, a shami says, "He must destroy the entire building, he must, he must destroy the entire building and return the beam to its owner." Which seems, I mean, yes, I guess that that could make sense, right? You stole it in order to make reparations, in order to make full repentance, you gotta return what you stole. But on the other hand, Ateh Hillal says, "The injured party receives only the value of the beam, but not the beam itself, due to an ordinance instituted for the sake of the penitent. In order to encourage repentance, the sages were lenient and required the robber to only return the value of the beam." And like many of these arguments in the Talmud, they sided with Bate Hillal. So what do you think? Do you think that, that we should side with Hillal or shami? Can, for those that are on screen, you can do thumbs up for Hillal, thumbs down for, if you agree with shami, or you can put in the chat, what do you think, Hillal or shami? Couple of Hills out there, right? It, it makes sense in a lot of ways. There's also this, this, in, in the Talmud, there's these, this saying called, or this, this way of looking at situations calling mit ney dar chay shalom, for the sake of peace, which this has some echoes of, but instead they say, for the sake of people, we want people to, to, to repent. And if we make repentance so difficult, and so challenging, and so onerous, and causing, Courtney, I love that. So Courtney says, "Will leaving the beam cause more harm? Or will removing, will leaving the beam cause more harm, or will removing the beam cause more harm?" And I think that this is a situation where, if you remove the beam, the, it causes tremendous harm, even as you are trying at the same time to create, to go back to that equilibrium, to restore, to repent, to repair the damage that has been done. Imagine if someone told you that a major piece of your home was stolen, and they were gonna take down your entire home. You'd be furious, you'd want to find another way to make it right. So now I wanna, Isabel Wilkerson, I'm sure many of you have read Cast, takes this sort of similar idea and thinks about it in our own country, in our own society. And she writes about a home also. "The inspector trained his infrared lens onto a misshapen bow in the ceiling, an invisible beam of light searching the layers of lath to test what the eye could not see. This house had been built generations ago, and I had noticed the slightest welt in a corner of plaster in a spare bedroom, and had chalked it up to idiosyncrasy. Over time, the welt in the ceiling became a wave that widened and bulged despite the new root. It had been building beyond perception for years. An old house is its own kind of devotional. A dowager aunt with a story to be coaxed out of her, a mystery, a series of interlocking puzzles awaiting solution. Why is this soffit sucked into the southeast corner of an eve? What is behind this discolored patch of brick? With an old house, the work is never done, and you don't expect it to be. America is an old house. We can never declare the work over. Wind, flood, drought, and human upheavals batter a structure that is already fighting whatever flaws were left unattended in the original foundation. When you live in an old house, you may not get into the basement after a storm to see what the rains have wrought. Or you may not want to go into the basement after a storm to see what the rains have wrought. Choose not to look, however, at your own peril. Whatever you are wishing away will not you until you gather the courage to face what you would rather not see." Many people may rightly say, "I had nothing to do with how this all started. I have nothing to do with the sins of the past. My ancestors never attacked indigenous people, they never owned slaves. And yes, not one of us was here when this house was built. Our immediate ancestors may not have, may have had nothing to do with it. But here we are, the current occupants of a property with stress cracks, and bowed walls, and fissures built into the foundation. We are the heirs to whatever is right of wrong with it. We did not erect the uneven pillars or the joists, but they are ours to deal with now." And so the question becomes, what do we do in our country? In our country that has had this terrible past history of not only slavery, but then also of a Jim Crow era, in which continued that oppression and continued to subjugate African-Americans and people of color to second class? How do we move forward? How do we, as the inheritors of this home, make that, say, what is our responsibility? When I look at our Jewish texts, what I see is Teshiva. Teshiva is between the things I have done against God, the things that I have done against another person. But we're also part of a wider community, and we're part of a country. And we, as the texts, both texts talks about a home and a foundation, and as the current inheritors of that, we too have a responsibility. Now, the thing is that no one knows the answer to reparations and what those should look like. And in Evanston, Illinois, as I think it was Jeffrey put in the chat, they are doing this around housing. I know that Georgetown University, in recognition of the slaves who helped to build parts of that university, have put aside opportunities and money for descendants. And it's happening in different ways in some places here and there. And currently, our country is debating, first, do we study this? Do we look at this? Do we try and understand what has, what happened in our past? Because in many ways, it's like Teshiva, it's like repentance. First, we have to understand what wrong has happened before we can figure out how to fix the wrong. And so that's actually the legislation that's been proposed and passed by the House of Representatives, is to study reparations. and passed by the House of Representatives, is to study reparations. The bill does not actually, HR 40, does not actually implement reparations. Instead, it implements a commission to come together to study the issue, to understand what happened in the past and what are the possibilities to take that wrong that no one alive today perpetrated slavery. There are not as many people alive today in the post-Reconstruction era or, you know, we start then to get to a time in which some of us were around. But it might not even be our ancestors, depending on when our families came to this country. Yet still, we have this responsibility. I think that that is one of the really interesting contrasts with American idealism and rugged individualism. America is a place where the individual is prized. And I think that we see that a great deal in the mask and the vaccine debates of this sense of individual freedom. Judaism is built very differently. Judaism is built around community and how we support the most vulnerable in our community. You read again and again in the Torah about the widow, the orphan and the stranger. And the widow, the orphan and the stranger in biblical times were the most vulnerable people. In a patriarchal society, if you don't have a patriarch, if you are not part of that community because you are a stranger, you are in deep peril. You are in deep instability. Judaism is all about the community. And so that, I think, is one of the real challenges that we have, living as Jews in America, is that our values teach us a responsibility toward one another and a responsibility to help other people and that we are in this all together. And Jeffrey, well, there were two comments. What about Native Americans, which is an excellent question, where there were treaties and there were attempts at reparations there? I think that unfortunately, the United States government has failed pretty horrifically there when you look at the situations of Native Americans. But that is a great question, Lois. And Jeffrey wrote about, it should not be a question of studying reparations or should be, it should, but it, it's a question of who pays, how, at what, and in what manner. And I think that that is true. I think to get us there, in many ways, we do have to study. And in many ways, it's not just studying, it's admitting that there was a wrong in an official government way. And in talking with many leaders of color, one of the things that they are most upset about is that there has not been that official recognition, that official apology for slavery and for the harms that came afterwards. In our last 10 minutes, I'm going to move to redemption. And redemption, like the things I've been talking about, comes in many forms. So we're going to talk about a couple of the forms till we get to that ultimate redemption and what that looks like. So in Genesis, we read, the angel who has redeemed me from all harm, bless the lads. In them may my name be recalled and the name of my fathers Abraham and Isaac. And may they be teeming multitudes upon the earth. And so this is Jacob speaking. And Jacob is talking about being redeemed from harm, being redeemed from, you know, a physical challenge, a physical danger. And then in the Exodus, there of course is, say therefore to the Israelite people, I am God. I will free you from the labors of Egyptians and deliver you from their bondage. I will redeem you with an outstretched arm through extraordinary chastisements. And this, in the Passover Seder, we talk about the four cups of redemption. And again, this is saving the Israelite people from bondage, which can be looked as a physical, but also we're beginning to get into a spiritual redemption as well with this. And then in Leviticus, we're going to move from people to the land. But the land must not be sold beyond reclaim, for the land is mine. Mine referring to the, the capital M is referring to God. You are but strangers resident with me throughout the land that you hold. You must provide for the redemption of the land. If your kinsman is in straits and has to sell part of his holding, his nearest redeemer shall come and redeem what his kinsman has sold. So this idea that the land also has to be redeemed and has to be kept safe. Another piece. And then another Exodus one. When you take count of benayisrael, the children of Israel, to determine their numbers, each man shall give an atonement pledge, a redemption for his soul to Adonai when you count them. Thus, there will be no plague among them when you count them. So this is talking about the census and about how this, this pledge is a redemption as well. But I want to move back to Passover. And Marve Lissiper, who, actually, I did not know who this person was before preparing for this, was actually, this was anonymously published in the mid 1700s and was a commentary to address specifically the Haggadah. So all the writings by, that are listed under this are specifically about the Haggadah. And it looks at Talmudic and Midrashic sources to try to better understand the Haggadah. So it reads, in every generation, all of this is part of Rabban Gomel's statement. And if you remember near the beginning of the Seder, Rabban Gomel talks about the sort of three key things that are part of the Seder. And so we're going to get into those. It explains why matzah is considered a Torah law, while eating maror, the bitter herbs, is rabbinic. Why is there a difference in the status of these two symbols? According to Rabban Gomel, we are obligated by the Torah to see ourselves as we went forth from Egypt. The matzah serves as a reminder of this biblical mandate, while the maror reminds us of slavery, which we are not obligated by the Torah to remember. So that's why it's rabbinic. Matzah also allows us to see ourselves in this fashion. Yet what is the purpose? What purpose is there in seeing ourselves as if we personally went forth from Egypt? Which is of course a refrain that we hear so many times in the Haggadah and we hear throughout Jewish tradition as well. Many generations have passed since the Exodus. What good is there in seeing the redemption in this way? This teaches us that the purpose of the redemption was not just the liberation from slavery in Egypt, but also the fact that we could enter the land of Egypt, or land of Israel, build the temple and seek atonement for our sins. Right? So it's, it's great that we're saved from slavery. It's almost like Dayanu in a lot of ways, right? Like, but in many ways, you need, if you leave Egypt, you do need a new place to go. And then when you get to that place, how do you worship God? And for them, that was through the temple. And the whole purpose of the temple was for redemption. It's the purpose of prayer today. It's why we call it the temple. Because for us, the temple of ancient days of sacrifice is transformed into the temple of prayers and words, which we offer up to God. So continuing with the text, the afikomen is an allusion to the final redemption, which is called safun bar ech, the hidden blessing. Is because of these hopes that scripture made matzah an obligation, you shall eat matzah at night. This is an allusion to the fact that we eat matzah during the night of exile, which comes before the light of redemption. And the light of redemption that's being referred to here is the Messianic age, is the future redemption of all people, of the whole world, that that's what we're leading toward. A world in which we know wholeness and goodness and peace and love and blessing, that's where we head. And how do we get there? We get there through the Exodus, through leaving Egypt behind, through atonement for our sins. And we're reminded along the way that where we head is toward a future redemption. Redemption happens when we redeem one another and redeem the captive, when we redeem the land. And ultimately, we too are redeemed in, when Elijah comes to announce that coming of the world to come, of, of better things, of a redeemed world. And so what do we do until we get to that moment of ultimate redemption? We continue to do our, what we do on Rosh Hashanah and Yom Kippur, which is repentance, reparation and seeking redemption. Because that's ultimately where we are trying to go. And so I hope that on this Yom Kippur, you also will think of those opportunities that you've had and will, we still have a few services left today to ask for that forgiveness with God. They say the gates close, but they don't really close until after Sukkot with Sinchat Torah and Sheminiat Zared and all that. So like, you still do have a little bit of time sort of with other people to seek that repentance. And we know that we as a community, we as a country have some tough conversations about this house that we have built. And how do we continue to repair it? And how do we continue to make those reparations and understand what it means to do that? And what it means for the people who are looking for that restoration and that reparation? Because we know from our own history what it means when a community who has harmed us says, we recognize that we've done something wrong and we want to repair it. And finally, we seek that redemption. All these things are deeply connected and tied toward one another and deeply connected to this day of Yom Kippur. So I thank you for spending some time and looking at these texts and thinking about repentance, reparation and redemption. And look forward to the day in which we will be able to once again have our study sessions at Macomb Street. And hopefully I will see some of you this afternoon during our services then. Thank you, everyone.